All right. Good morning, Cincinnati. It's been a while since we've had a coronavirus update. And we're having one because the numbers are moving in the wrong direction. And we are committed to following the data and the science and reporting honestly and fairly with all of you as numbers change. And sadly, numbers are going up in the wrong direction in Cincinnati and in our region, even more so in the suburban areas of our region than in the city, but they're going up in the city as well. So I'm going to start with having our great Commissioner Melville Moore give an update on some of the numbers, and then I'll make a few announcements and discussions, and then take some questions. Commissioner Moore?
Good morning, Cincinnati, and thank you, Mayor Cranley. Look at our first slide here. We're at 101 cases in one day. And you see the age range. I just want to draw your attention where those numbers are higher among the age ranges. And you see 20 to 29, 30 to 39. Next slide. That's 101 new cases, which brings us to 2,363 cases. Again, let me draw your attention to the age range of 20 to 29 and 30 to 39. Those are the individuals who are testing positive. So what's the median age range? 37. It goes back to the tie of number of cases new and overall cases where they're falling in that age range, 37. Hospitalizations, 35. And talking with the mayor, just to give you a sense of these numbers, we looked at April. As you know, everything was really, our numbers were great in April. And total hospitalizations in April, there was 112. You don't have this slide. And under 30, it was one. One case. So currently, 35 hospitalizations. Deaths, 65. Still, our age range for our deaths, 80 to 89, followed by 90 to 99 years old. But then look at the 60 to 69, there are 14 there. Again, we need to continue to be very vigilant in wearing our masks. Next slide. So that's the total number of individuals who have recovered. And where do you see the numbers being the greatest? 20 to 29, 30 to 39. So there's a common thread here this morning. High increase in cases among our younger generation. But still, who is greatly impacted when we look at our deaths? And it's our seniors. So young people, mask up, six feet back. It's important that you put your mask on when you're out. Care for yourself and love your loved ones. It is critical that we adhere to this. We want the numbers to go in another direction, not the direction that we're going in right now. Thank you.
Couple of exciting announcements related to the importance of wearing masks. And let me just state that we have to live with this virus. Clearly, it's not going away in the summer, as the President and others predicted falsely. It's here. It's also the case that we cannot continue to shut down economies to deal with it. We have to continue to work. We have to be able to provide for our families. And the best way to do that by far is wearing a mask and keeping reasonable distances as best one can. And in the last several days, I've talked to the leadership at Procter &amp; Gamble and Kroger and United Dairy Farmers, among others. And I'm proud to say that Kroger is already making masks available for sale at all of their stores nationwide. And UDF is going to make masks available for purchase within a couple of weeks, working on order. And all Cincinnati stores, starting today, that are located in the city, Kroger stores, will have free masks at the door with an assistant who will make sure that you get one mask per person. But that includes the store on Paxton in Hyde Park, Vying Street, I think in Hartwell, Kennard, Alpha Mitchell, down in Clifton, Camp Washington area, Ferguson Road in Westwood, Mount Washington store on Beauchamp, the Oakley store on Marburg, Price Hill store on Warsaw Avenue, the New Downtown store on Court Street, the Coryville store and the Glenway Avenue store out in Western Hills, West Price Hill, Westwood area. I appreciate the leadership of Kroger to provide free masks at the point of entry. So if you forget your mask, you can get one for free. And we hope that people will take advantage of it. It is also clear that City Council will be, and I think it either has or is about to, announce a special meeting of City Council tomorrow at 11:30 to consider a mask ordinance similar to the ordinance that the Dayton City Council passed yesterday. And there will be a budget committee, because health is within the jurisdiction of the budget committee, by Chairman David Mann, I think at 10:30 tomorrow. As I think some of you know, under our charter, ordinances have to go through committee before they go to the full session of council. And so we expect that to be up tomorrow for discussion and for a vote. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions. John?
Mayor, how do you, how have you calculated what's most effective in encouraging the wearing of masks versus requirement with a penalty? And since there's nearly universal agreement among medical experts that you should wear a mask out in public, why not propose it yourself that there should be a requirement?
Well, as a legal matter, I think we're on much safer ground if City Council does it, which is what happened in Dayton, City Council passing ordinance. Let me be clear. I support an ordinance properly constructed to require mask wearing. Masks are our best hope to keep the economy afloat and to keep people safe. We no longer have, if we ever had it in the first place, the luxury of choosing it's one or the other, and we're shutting down the economy to save the health. People cannot financially survive that, and there are consequences. For example, the report that came out from the pediatricians last couple of days about the isolation, negative consequences of kids not being in in-person school. In my opinion, we should wear masks and we should go back to school. We should wear masks and keep the economy open. You know, I hear, it's sad to me and tragic how polarized some of these discussions have become, where you have some on the left who just say, you know, stay home all the time, which is devastating financially for families. And then on the other side, you have, well, I don't even want to wear a mask. Neither are good for public health or for the economy. And if the economy is bad enough, there are negative public health consequences to individuals, families, anxiety, depression, shootings, the whole gamut. And so I believe that mask wearing is a common sense way forward in order to preserve people's health and keep the economy open and to keep schools open and to get kids back in school, which I think is desperately needed as the pediatrician report recently stated. But if people don't wear masks, then there are serious harm to people's health that could occur, especially for senior citizens, as Commissioner Moore stated, where you have much higher death rates and serious hospitalization rates. So I think for me, the details are important, and there's going to be a robust discussion tomorrow, from what I understand. I know that there'll be some ordinances proposed at a model off the Dayton ordinance. And to be clear, that ordinance is about indoor, indoor business practices. So this is not a ban or a requirement to wear a mask if you're out walking, if you're in a park, if you're in a rec center exercising. There are explicit exceptions for that in the ordinance. This is a requirement that you wear a mask when you're at a public accommodation, business location, in close proximity to others. And there's explicit carve-outs that if you're in an office setting or a room this big, that you can take your mask off if they have a conversation, if you can keep six feet apart. But if you're in a grocery store or if you're in a retail establishment, you are required to wear a mask. It is also the case that the fine is civil, not criminal, and the business is not required to enforce. The business can enforce, but not required to enforce. And I know the businesses in Cincinnati and in Dayton did not want to be the police. They did not want to refuse service to customers necessarily. Some did, some wouldn't, some do, some already have internal policies that require mask wearing in order to get service. But the ordinance in Dayton says that businesses and individuals can call and say, this person's not wearing a mask, et cetera. But if that happens, the most I believe that they are fined is $85 in Dayton. I can tell you, based on conversations I've had with City Council members so far, is that the ordinances that are being drafted by City Council right now have a lower fine than $85. And that'll be worked out in committee. It's also the case that Councilmember Kearney, among others, has raised the issue of enforcement and racial impact. And she is contemplating an ordinance versus a resolution. Obviously, a resolution would be more of a statement and not a law. And I don't think that she's made up her mind yet either on which is preferable. And that, I think, is exactly what committee is for, to hash out these details. And they're big issues. We're unanimous in agreement that everyone should wear a mask. And that's the best way to keep the economy open. It's the best way to get schools back open. It's the best way to move forward. What's unclear right now is how severe the penalty should be, how is it enforced, where does it apply? And I think there's overwhelming agreement that it will not apply outdoors, will be indoor only, and that the businesses will not be obligated to perform a police function. Yeah, question?
So Mayor, if the businesses aren't going to enforce it, then obviously you're expecting the police to enforce this? Is that the way you're seeing it?
Again, you got to ask, there are several different ordinances being drafted, a resolution. So it depends on how they're crafted by City Council. So, I mean, if it's a resolution, then it's not enforced at all. If it's an ordinance, then it will be enforced ultimately by the police. So those sort of details are being hashed out.
What are you in favor of?
I believe there should be a mask requirement with, in public accommodation businesses, indoor only. And should have a, be subject to a small civil fine, $25, $35, somewhere in that range. As Councilman Sittenfeld said on his Twitter account yesterday, he doesn't want to criminalize poverty. And so there is this issue of access. And I'm comfortable that City Council are sensitive to all of these different issues. And that's again, why I think the committee work is important, to have these honest conversations and to work out these details.
Is that why, do you have the power as mayor to kind of put in an order to mandate people? But it seems like you're choosing the option to let City Council handle it. Is that?
I don't know, I don't believe that's true. I mean, Dayton did it yesterday by City Council ordinance. The mayor of Dayton is a good friend of mine, did not impose it. She supported it, but she did not order it. I think there's no question, this will be controversial, there's no question, we will be likely sued by whatever we do if it's an ordinance. And so I think we're on the strongest legal ground. If there's a full hearing, legislative action, legislative discussion, law passed. It's also the case that even if Commissioner and I tried to do something like this, right now, we don't have the legal authority to reduce it to a $25 civil fine. That requires an active City Council. So we do not, I don't accept the premise of your question. We do not have the authority to put in a mandate like this in the sort of way that we want to do it, which is not to criminalize it and not to be too much of a burden on low-income individuals and/or businesses who are just trying to survive and don't want to be put in the position of policing their stores.
Now, the timing of this with the holiday weekend coming up, how fast could this ordinance be moved through City Council? And would it be too late for the holiday weekend where potentially many people could be out and about?
Well, the schedule is set up so that it could be passed tomorrow. It will require a suspension vote of seven out of nine in order for it to go into effect immediately. So it depends on attendance and whether councilmembers vote for the suspension for it to go into effect. But if the support is there, five votes for the ordinance and seven votes for the suspension, it can be passed tomorrow. But I also want to go back to your comment about people going out for the weekend. I'm unaware that anyone is talking about an outdoor mask requirement. My understanding is that what Council is contemplating is an indoor requirement for public accommodations of businesses.
How do you, what are your thoughts as it really isn't reasonably enforcing this? If it passes, because just think back to the six feet social distancing and stay at home. And I know we were getting tons of calls of people about their neighbors not doing this or, you know, seeing people walk down the street. So how do you, I mean, how do you deal with that if this is passed tomorrow?
The question was about, you know, enforcement. And I think it's going to be tricky. And I can tell you, for example, that we received a communication directly from David Singleton of the Ohio Justice and Peace Center about the racial disparity of tickets that were issued under the stay-at-home order that the governor issued several months ago in Hamilton County. And I know, as I mentioned, Councilmember Kearney is very sensitive to that. And I think all the councils are sensitive to that. I'm sensitive to that. So these are, this, these kinds of questions, in my opinion, can and should be answered and discussed at length tomorrow in committee. And that's the whole point of legislative deliberative bodies to go through these pros and cons. And I don't think there's going to be a perfect answer. And I don't believe the fact that the enforcement will be imperfect means we shouldn't do it. I believe masks are the best way to protect people's health and keep this economy moving forward.
The ordinance only being inside, is this based on numbers that have come out of the infected? Have they been found to have contracted this in restaurants or in buildings more than just generally outside, this might be?
Well, this is a question for Commissioner Moore to add to, but my understanding is that the majority of increase of younger people have come from nightclubs and bars. But I don't know if you want to add to that.
Mayor Cranley, you're spot on. When we did our contact, as we continued to do our contact tracing, we had very few, and when I say few, I'm talking about 15 people, who even said that they were at a large gathering. It is the bars, it's the nightclubs, malls, they talked about that, baby showers, again, I'm sorry, indoors.
Mayor, what, how many masks are available for free at Kroger? Do you know? Because I know yesterday, when you met with federal officials, you asked them about providing more masks. I wonder, do you know how many the city has and how many will be distributed?
I don't know. I thought I had.
Kroger has 200,000.
Kroger has 200,000, but they're not just, 200,000.
Does the access to masks by people in the public, because you mentioned part of it is the economic disparity, people might not be able to have the mask. Does people's availability to get them for free from Kroger make you more comfortable with the passing of this ordinance, potentially?
I think those issues can and should be addressed in the hearing tomorrow. I believe that we should try to figure out how to require mask wearing inside of stores and retail establishments, et cetera. But we should be sensitive to whether people can access masks and afford masks, if they have religious objections. All those things that are built into the Dayton ordinance, I think, should be fully discussed.
Guys, we have to get to people on the phone, too.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we have folks on the phone. Jay Hanselman from WVXU, is that you?
Bill Reinhardt.
Oh, Bill Reinhardt, I'm sorry. Bill?
It's Bill Reinhardt, actually. Okay. Wondering about bars and restaurants, will people still be able to go to bars and lower the mask or go to a restaurant and lower the mask and eat?
You know, this, yes, under City, I don't know if anyone is banning or proposing to ban bars and restaurants from being open. The governor is announcing a color coding thing today, so I don't know if the governor's planning to shut down bars and restaurants or not, but I'm not, and I don't believe that City Council is planning to do that. Is there somebody on the phone from 700 WLW? Is there somebody on the phone from the CISA Enquirer?
Hi, Mayor Cranley, this is Hannah Farland, but you actually addressed my question already, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there somebody on the call from the Business Courier?
Yeah, Mayor, do you think that the governor should impose a mask requirement statewide at this point?
I think that when you have a city like Cincinnati, where Norwood is completely inside Cincinnati, St. Bernard and Elmond Place are completely inside Cincinnati, and we obviously have people moving back and forth to Northern Kentucky and, you know, College Hill, North College Hill, et cetera, that it is difficult to have a meaningful impact if it's city only. I also think that it seems reasonable to do a regional approach, despite that we're seeing in Dayton, Cincinnati, is not happening in southeastern Ohio right now. But yes, I believe the governor should, on a regional basis, require masks. Having said that, like our thoughtful City Council and myself, I think they've really got to reevaluate the penalties, the fines, the enforcement, so you don't have the unintended consequence of, as Councilman Sittenfeld eloquently put it, criminalizing poverty for people who can't afford or access masks. So I think these are complicated issues. But I definitely think that ours will send a message. But since we all live in a community that travels in and out of city borders and state borders and jurisdiction borders, it's going to be, unless we all do it, it's going to be, it's not going to make a huge difference, probably.
And one other question in respect to that. Do you hope that other mayors and councils of villages and whatnot follow your lead here? Are you talking to any of them? Or is that, you know, possible, do you think, that they'll do that?
Well, I mean, Dayton did it yesterday, and I believe Columbus is doing it today, or it's scheduled to happen the next day or so in Columbus. So, yeah, I think other people are doing it. And certainly, the governor, I believe, is reasonably likely to impose regional mask requirements if the numbers continue to go in the direction that we're seeing.
Thank you.
Any other, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, did I hear you correctly that if it's not done on a regional basis, that you don't think Cincinnati's mask ordinance would be effective?
Well, it won't be as effective, right? I mean, you have people going in and out of the city all the time. Now, if you take mask wearing for the region from, say, 25% to 35%, that's still an improvement, but you still have a huge number of people who aren't wearing masks in close contact with others who can spread and respread. And so if you're, if, once you go down this road, obviously, it becomes more effective the more jurisdictions do it. I also want to, I do want to ask the Commissioner to say a few words that has come up in recent discussion around the benefit of, the health benefit of in-person education that has been discussed and debated recently.
Thank you, Mayor Cranley. You know, I don't have any children, but I will say this. We know through our data and in my expert opinion, our children need to be in school. I believe taking the appropriate precautionary measures from the sidewalk to enter a bus, from the sidewalk to enter the school, and monitoring that our children can learn. The Pediatric Journal has shared with us what isolation does to our children. Through history, we have seen, when children are out for the summer and they return back to school, there's a period in time where it's almost like what I consider catch-up, to reiterate some of the things, kind of like a review. So I just, in my conversations with the mayor and others, our children need to be in school to learn and to socialize. And the learning that will occur in this new norm, as adults, we're struggling. Can you imagine what those babies are doing? So that's an opportunity to teach our children about this new way of living and how we have to engage and socialize. I would not be standing here if I was not educated. Education is very important.
I just wanted to add to that a few additional data points. And this is, you know, as I mentioned earlier, sort of, it's not helpful when people take extreme positions. The virus is very real. The numbers are going back up. Over 130,000 Americans have died from COVID-19. It's also the case that it affects dramatically, skews dramatically to older senior citizens. In Ohio, or at least in Cincinnati, not a single person under the age of 30 has died of COVID-19. In April of 2020, kids were out of school by order of the governor. And every summer, as we all know, our shootings go up. as we all know, our shootings go up in hotter weather and when kids are out of school. And in April of 2019, there were 20 shootings in Cincinnati. In April of 2020, there were 53. The vast majority of these shooting victims are under the age of 30. The vast majority of them, well, they all go to the hospital, and the homicides were a difference of 1 versus 16. 1 in April of 2019 and 16 in 2020. And so that's for a lot of reasons, not just because they're out of school, but it is clearly a contributing factor. And compared to the fact that not a single person under the age of 30 has died of COVID-19, it seems to me that we've got to find reasonable approaches that maintain safety, wear masks, have temperatures taken, schools figured out in a way that will not put kids in a far greater jeopardy of being out of school and what could happen to them. And as the pediatricians published this week, could be at risk for, if not physical violence, educational stunted development, educational setbacks, anxiety, social isolation, and all the things they talked about.
Are you saying all these things, Mayor, because you believe that kids should be back in school five days a week as opposed to this split decision?
I believe that they need to go back to school in person.
Five days a week?
That was, that is what my son is going to be doing, and that's what most suburban schools are doing. And I'm not going to dictate exactly how many days, but I believe that they should try to get five days if they can. And I think that the pediatricians have put out a very strong statement saying of the negative consequences. And what I don't want to see is city schoolkids at a competitive disadvantage to suburban and private schoolkids who are going to go back five days a week. And the educational developmental risks involved of those children not having access to education, like, I don't want to see a donut in the region where all the other children in the region get the access of, the benefits of five days of in-person school if the donut hole in the city does not. That doesn't seem fair or right, and I don't think it's going to have positive outcomes for neighborhoods, for individuals, for families. And then you have the issue of childcare, which is if they're required to stay home, how do their parents work? And a lot of times, the parents will, A, maybe lose a job, but if they keep their job, they may put their kid with their grandparents. And if the grandparents are at high risk of COVID, of serious risk in death, I don't understand how it's to the benefit, the public health benefit, to go in that direction.
So are you calling on CPS right now to change this decision and go to five days a week?
I have asked publicly yesterday that they consider the expert doctor opinion of the pediatricians, and just like we are listening to the experts who are telling us and showing us that the numbers are going up in the city, and following the doctor's advice, which is Dr. Fauci and Dr. Moore and many others, that we should wear masks to move in that direction of treating the public health crisis as a real crisis and real risks, moving towards more masks, but also recognizing that there are other unintended consequences of a lot of these decisions, including the unintended consequences of social isolation, educational development being stunted, as the pediatricians laid out very eloquently in their report in the last couple of days. So what I don't want is to be, and nor does Dr. Moore want to, who clearly said that kids need to be back in school in a safe way, to be paraphrased as an extreme one way or the other. Of course, the way in which schools go back have got to be carefully planned out. But we have carefully planned out for three months how firefighters will work, how sanitation folks will work, how the Kroger clerk and retail assistant has worked for the last three months under, at great risk, without knowing all the details. These are scary times, these are difficult jobs, but the jobs have got to be done, and they've got to be done in a way that will not hold back Cincinnati children for a generation if they miss out on additional benefits of in-person education. So I can't tell you that it has to be five days in person, but I definitely know, and the pediatricians know because I listen to experts and follow doctor advice, that they need as much in-person education as can possibly be delivered. And I don't think it would be good if Cincinnati kids get less in-person education than all the suburban and private schools in our region.
Yeah, I agree with you.
All right. This has been fun. But having said that, the virus is spiking, wear a mask. We'll have obviously a very thoughtful discussion, deliberate discussion tomorrow as to what the City Council can adopt to require masks, which is, I think, a step in the right direction, indoors, an indoor requirement. But there are a lot of important details, sensitivities around enforcement that can and should be discussed tomorrow. Thank you very much.